Alright, okay. My name is Francois Petersa. I'm a senior consultant at Gabriel Rogers Smith and Company. I'm here to discuss with you the results of the Police and Fire Retirement System Pension Valuation Report. This pension valuation report was done as of June 30, 2023, but we use actuarial techniques to roll it forward to the fiscal year starting at July 1, 2024. Please feel free to stop me at any point in time if you have any questions. I'm going to give you a quick, high-level overview of what we do when we do pension valuations, and then I'll discuss the results for the Police and Fire. Okay, so if we do a pension valuation, we collect data from the city, from Laurie, and from the investment consultant. We collect people data, which consists of your active members, your retirees and beneficiaries, your drop members, and then also people that terminated but who accrued enough service to eventually come back and get a benefit. We also collect your financial information, which consists of the transactions that happened from July 1, 22 through June 30, 2023. It consists of your employee contributions, member contributions, benefit payments, refunds, and then your interest and dividends, and gains and losses on your investments. We then take your market value. We don't necessarily use the market value to offset against your liabilities, because we know that the market value is very volatile. Over the last five years, we had a 4.5% return, we had a 0.5% return, we had a 34% return. We had a last year, we had a minus 17% return, and the current year, we had an 11% return. So you can see, it's very volatile. We've got a 7% assumed return on the valuation. So when we calculate your funding value of assets, we try to get rid of that volatility so that your contributions are as smooth as possible, and not one year, a lot, and then if the market does well, then it drops, and then if the market does bad, then it picks up again.
Question. You said we had a 17% loss.
Loss 21, 22.
And this year, we were up 11.
22, 23 was 11.04%.
Okay, so of that 17%, what did that cost the actual city? I know that we have to cover anything over 5%, is that correct?
Well, that's your total assets. That's not anything to do...
Okay.
Maybe John can add to that.
The drought.
Yeah.
Which is the system as a whole.
Okay.
It doesn't look at individual analysis, it looks at the whole system and all of the current employees working and those retired and those who have to be discharged.
Okay. So we take the data, we take the assumptions that we have got to make about how people's going to retire, get disabled, terminate, pass away, and your investments that you're going to earn and possible salary increases. So we combine your assumptions, your benefit provisions, and then your data in a mathematical model, and we calculate the liability for each person. We add up all that liabilities, and then we subtract the assets from it to see whether you are overfunded, if you have more assets than liabilities, or underfunded, if you have less assets than liabilities. We'll see in a few that you are underfunded. That underfunded liability does not have to be paid off immediately, but it's paid off over a period of years. For this valuation, we used 14 years to amortize. And then we put together a report, and then we come and present it. So if you turn to page A1...
No. Yeah, go ahead. Okay.
On page A1 of this valuation report, we've got your contribution requirement for the fiscal year starting July 1, 2024. The numbers next to it was the numbers that we calculated last year and presented last year for the fiscal year that started July 1, 2023. The first number that jumps out to us is that there are less active members in the system this year than what there were last year. We had some members that terminate. Those are those terminated vested folks. They've got accrued enough benefit service to eventually get a benefit, but they're not old enough to get a benefit. So at some point in the future, they will come back. So the number of actives decreased. Your payroll decreased slightly, and therefore your projected payroll decreased slightly. Two components to your contribution requirement. The first is called the normal cost. That is the cost for your active members to accrue another year's worth of benefits.
Sorry to cut you off again.
Yes.
I see here you said that the payroll decreased.
Slightly, yeah.
Yeah, and you know, not by much. I think, what is that, 100,000 at least?
Yes, yes.
How was that, that payroll would decrease?
We had a lot of police officers leave.
Can you come to the mic if you...
It was during the time when we had a whole wave of police officers leaving, so the payroll was down.
Okay.
So they are deferred vested, but they weren't eligible to take benefits yet. Okay?
So the two components to your contribution requirement, the first component is called the normal cost. That's the cost for active members to accrue another year's worth of benefits. Normally, that is very stable. The cost calculated as a percent of payroll is very stable, and we can see that the total normal cost is very stable. It's 24.21% last year and 24.37% this year. There was a benefit change that were captured with this valuation. Police command members are paying now 6% of their pay towards their retirement benefits. Last year, they were paying 3% towards their benefits. So the net employer normal cost, the piece that the city got to pick up, is slightly less because your police command is paying in slightly more. When we put it over as a dollar amount, last year, the dollar amount was $1.9 million. This year, it's 1.867. So there's been a slight decrease in your normal cost requirement. Slightly lower pay and then slightly lower normal cost rate. Your amortization payment increased, though. It increased from $3.6 million to $4.01 million for an increase of about $460,000. And we'll discuss why it increased in a couple pages, but it's due to asset losses and liability losses. The total city contribution increased from 5.581 to $5.969 million. If you turn to page A3, on this page, we've got the...
A3.
A3. Yes. Sorry. On this page, we've got the development of the funding value. As I said, we don't use the market value, because we know that the market value is very volatile. If we look in line E, E for egg, 3, this year, there's an amount of $5.585 million. That's the gain that the system had above its 7% assumed rate of return. We don't use all of that immediately, but we phase it in over a period of five years in order to get rid of some of the volatility. If you look at the number next to it, last year, there was a loss of $50.9 million. That $50.9 million was also not recognized immediately, but it was phased in. We used 20% last year, 20% this year, and then we've got three more years of 20% to use. So under the 2024 column, if we add up all the items in subsection F, we've got that negative 3.587. That means that you've got an actuarial asset loss of $3.587 million. You had a gain last year because the markets did well, but because the markets did very poorly the year before that, and we didn't use all of that, it calculated to an actuarial loss for this year.
So we had a bad... Is this where we go back to the 17%?
Yes.
Loss. You had an 11% positive from last year, but when you calculate them both, you still have that shortage of, what is that? Am I going to...
Yeah, because you've got, you want to earn, you want to earn seven, you lost 17. So it's a 24% gap. And then in the next year, you want to earn seven, but you only got 11, so there's only 4%. So the difference between the two, when you add it together, it's approximately still minus 20. So you are still down below from where you should have been.
How do we fix that?
Fix that by assets. Assets returning. You've got a diversified portfolio already. Your assets now just need to return, but that's for the investment manager, and he'll tell you, it's cyclical. It's not every year, you're going to invest money and you're going to make money.
Are these the same investments we do year after year, or do we change them and look at what we still might be better?
I believe the retirement board looks at the investments on a regular basis and then gives the investment manager instructions about how to, if they want to change allocations. But the investment manager can talk more about where the actual money is invested and...
You can stop. Please, just so that the viewers at home can hear.
We have our investment manager here today, and so I think what I could propose is that we continue to go through the report and get through the reports, and then we can have the manager, I mean, talk about some of our returns over time, either today or at another meeting. But basically, we will look at the investment returns quarterly, unless something drastically happens in between. We talk about them at our monthly meetings, but we have a report issued to us quarterly, and we compare the manager's performance with the performance of baselines of their peers. And so we're always looking at that. I think one of the questions that you asked Francois is, does our report look any different than anybody else's? Everybody's in the same boat. Investments go up, investments go down, and that's the way it is. Like I said, the year before, we earned 34%, then we go down 17%, then we're up 11%. And so that's just the way that the markets operate. And so if you'd like to hear more detail, I guess Steve could talk about...
I'll take your recommendation and let him finish, and then we can maybe have Steve...
Talk about investments. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I feel comfortable saying, you know, when you say things like, you know, compared to everybody else, everybody's in the same pot.
Is our report any unusual compared to the others?
Nope, nope. Everybody in the public investment space, in the public retirement space, invest money, invest their assets with an investment consultant, and pretty much everybody has the same kind of allocation. Might have, might change slightly, depend on the maturity of the plan. Okay, so if we turn to page A5, that is your gain-loss for the year. We started the year off with a $41.6 million unfunded liability. We knew that your active members were going to accrue another year's worth of service. We knew that the city was going to make contributions, as well as the employees. So including interest, we expected your unfunded liability to decrease by about 1.1 million dollars to $40.557 million. There was a slight decrease in liabilities, because police are paying in slightly a higher employee contribution rate. So at the end of the day, we expected your unfunded liability to be 40.5 to $4 million. When we were done with our calculations, line number nine, it ended up to be $44.5 million for an actuarial loss of 3.978. Line number 11, that's the number that we just saw on the previous page, the 3.587 asset loss. Again, I want to reiterate that last year, there was not a loss, but it was a loss from the prior year that is added, that 20% that's included.
Can I ask just a quick question?
Yeah.
I like how we're using, and I thank you for saying, in the past, 2021, we had a 17% loss, 2022, we had an 11% win. This year, we had a 7% win, or that's only 4%. It doesn't cover the remaining, so we still have that 20%.
Well, your assumption is 7%. I don't know where we are. I think we're higher than 7%?
So far.
So far. There's another month I have to go before...
That's beautiful. My question is, if we took overall, would we say that we're still, we're in a net positive right now?
Long-term, yeah.
Long-term.
That's what I mean, like overall, long-term, in the last, say, 10, 15 years?
Yes, but I mean, we look at it since inception. Our actuarial rate returns 7%, we return 8% over the long term. Fluctuating, like if you look at page A4, it kind of shows you how the market, as the market returns are over the time. And then, I mean, so Steve, our consultant, can run your report, looking at any different period.
Because, you know, it's the optics of it looking like, well, you know, and I don't mean anything wrong, but, and I'm trying to give like the benefit of Steve and his firm. We can say, you know, over the last two, three years, they can show a 20% decrease, but over the last 15 years, do we see a maybe 7, 10, 11% positive or increase? Do you understand my question?
So, I do want to make one thing. He doesn't actually invest the money. He just oversees the managers that we hired that does. He's more on their performance. Okay, so Steve doesn't actually invest the money.
Evening, everybody. So I've been with the city for a long time. This goes back to 1986, and if you look at our returns since 1986, we've made 8.5% net of all fees. The BOE is 7. So we've outperformed significantly. That has added approximately 60 million in value over and above the actuarial required return. The 20-year return is 7.9%. The 10-year return is 8.41.
Okay.
So our long-term returns, excellent added value, saved the taxpayers' money. It was enough extra to allow for maybe some additional benefits for Police and Fire. Kelpers, the largest pension fund in the world, the most sophisticated, we like to show these numbers, it's all public information, their 10-year return is, they were ahead of us slightly, I'm sorry. We were 6.73, they were 7.1. Our 20-year return was 8.41, Kelpers was 7. The 30-year return, we were 7.9, and they were 7.5. So we did very well versus the most sophisticated pension funds.
You know what it tells me, Steve? We have the most sophisticated...
Well, there's plenty of opportunity to make mistakes, so we've been very fortunate over a long period of time.
And I just, I'm asking these questions just for my own knowledge, and maybe for, you know, the residents at home. I'm thinking, okay, well, you know, if there's, you know, some residents could be hearing this right now, like, oh my God, there's a loss, but overall, there's actually a net positive, and I just wanted to be able to surface that out.
Absolutely.
Ought to iron that out.
And the part of the problem was, until a couple of years ago, we had from fixed income investments, you couldn't, if you invested your money in bonds, you made 2%, 2.5%, which isn't going to get you anywhere close to the 7. So you had to have more in things like equities and real estate to get to the 7% to achieve that. But those types of investments are more volatile, as Francois indicated. So the returns are going to fluctuate much more when you have more of a focus on equities. So when bonds are only yielding 2.5%, it's really, really difficult. Historically, over many, many decades, bonds have returned around 6%. Equities around 10%. You combine the two, and you get somewhere around a 7 or 7.5% return. And fortunately, in net of our expenses, we've done better than that over many, many years. So, but the last 10 years or so, having that low interest rate environment was very problematic, very difficult. The other thing that made it extremely difficult is the returns of the indexes looked okay, but you had a handful of growth stocks that controlled the returns, and no investment manager is going to put 45% of his money in seven stocks. It's just not going to happen. So there was a number of different reasons. COVID, higher inflation, rising interest rates. We think going forward, in the short run, we're going into a better period. Presidential election cycles tend to be good, and when the Fed starts cutting interest rates, that tends to be good for equity markets. Longer haul, when they break the back, when the Federal Reserve breaks the back of inflation, that leads to very good long-term investment returns. And that happened. Inflation hit 20% after World War II. The 50s and 60s were really excellent, double-digit returns for equities, stocks. In the 70s and late, early 80s, they broke the back of inflation again. 80s and 90s, again, double-digit returns. And I'm talking 14, 15% per year. So we think down the road, we're going to be seeing some, not that we aren't going to have volatility, and not that we aren't going to have declines, but overall, it should be very good. And now finally, after 10, 12 years, bonds are going to help us.
Okay. I like that, Steve. 1982.
1982.
I wasn't even born.
12% mortgages.
Not that much different today, Steve.
I'm almost done. The only other comment that I wanted to make is that if we did use the market value to offset against your liabilities and to calculate the contribution requirement, the contribution requirement for the city would have been about $7 million and not the $6 million that we calculated. And that means that if we return the 7% exactly over the next four years, active members retire exactly as we think they're going to retire, get the same pay increases as we think they're going to happen. The city's contribution is going to increase to about $7 million in the next four years. Okay?
Counselor Chair.
And that's all I have prepared. If you have any questions, I can...
Counselor Wenzel.
You know, in the event that we, it happened where we lost 17%, what do we do that year? Do we have enough in stockpile to pay off our obligations? And what would be like the percentage, like 20% or 20%, that it would be bad news?
Well, the benefit payments in the system is about, I think, about between 12 and 13 million dollars. You have about almost $200 million in assets available, so you've got enough money to cover it for a while. And 25% is probably not even going to make you not being able to, being paid to pay your benefits.
Do we invest all of our money that is saved, sort of, or do we have some in the savings where we don't touch it, or do we invest all of it?
Well, some of it is invested in shorter-term, safer investments, but the way we try to manage benefit payments is, take for example, growth stocks, which had done extremely well. And there's always this reversion to the mean. So if we need money for benefit payments, which we do at the end of every month, and growth stocks, one particular year, they were up 45%. So we would take some money out of growth stocks. We have shorter-term bond investments, which fluctuate very little. So if the stock market wasn't doing very well...
He's up at the mic.
We would take some money out of those short-term bonds and use that for benefit payments, and at least we're getting a little bit of interest. Today...
Steve, I'm going to have you come up to the mic, just so that the residents at home can hear you.
Fortunately, today, in short-term cash investments, we make 5%. Now, if the Fed starts cutting interest rates, that's going to go down. But yes, we have safer types of investments that we can draw upon when markets go down to make those benefit payments. So we manage that.
Plus, I mean, not that I'm a financial advisor or by any means know anywhere where you should invest your money, but I know, you know, money that's just sitting in, let's just say, a reserve account, that's technically, it's not, you know, there's no return on it, we're kind of losing money at that point. So I guess we're risk takers in the hands of Steve and his firm.
The risk is just the amount of the fluctuation of the assets. And along with that, if you want a higher return on the assets, you have to be willing to absorb higher fluctuation. It's not a matter of losing money. We know what we're going to make over long periods of time. If you look at 25 years, 50 years, and 90 years, the return from stocks, it's the same. It's 10%. And so we know if we, if we hold and we stick with it and make smaller incremental adjustments over time, we can add value to that and get a slightly greater return, which we've actually done. We've done a little bit better than 10% from our equities going back 37 years.
There was 200 million, is that what you said?
A little bit less than that, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I mean, actually, we're pretty safe.
But you're paying benefits, yes.
Yeah, you're 82% funded, which anything over 80, well, I better defer to Francois for, to respond.
You have a second part to this, correct?
Yeah.
General Government.
Okay, General Government.
Like Mr. Riga said, the funded rate is 82%. That means you've got 82 cents on the dollar for all the liabilities that you've got. 82% is reasonably well-funded in Michigan today. You are going in the right direction as well, which helps.
It's a good thing.
Thank you.
Okay.
So let's go over to General Government.
Let's get them to General Government. I have the end.
We have Jason Franken from Foster &amp; Foster for General Government.
Awesome. Are you two competitors?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
I was taking shouts, I was recognizing Steve. I saw why you were giving me those looks, huh, Frank? I'm just kidding.
So everything that has been said so far, you know, really applies to the employees' retirement system as well. The experience varies same. Rather than negative 17, you had negative 15 two years ago, and rather than 11, you got 10%. So the returns are very similar. I mean, if you flip to page 5 of the report, ultimately, we're showing an increase in the contribution requirement of around $400,000, going from $1.67 to $2.06 million. So there is about a $400,000 increase to your contribution requirement for the year. One of the differences between the two plans, though, just listening to Francois's presentation, you know, in this plan, the number of actives actually increased. It went from 117 to 123, and the average increases in the salary were 13.25%. So your payroll actually increased by about $800,000 from this year to last year. And so that additional contribution, our additional payroll led to about 100,000 of that $400,000 increase was attributable to the increase in the normal cost, which is the benefits that are being earned by the fund. You know, very similar in terms of, you know, market value of the assets, there is about, just about $40 million, and the total benefit payments for the, for a year, about $4 million. So you have about, you know, 10, 10 times the annual benefit payments in the current asset value. One other thing I wanted to note, you know, regarding your contribution, just the funding policy that's in place, there is a natural escalation built into that. It's designed to increase by about 3, the amortization payment is designed to increase by 3.5% per year. So if we got our 7% every year, you know, you might think, well, our contribution should remain, remain flat. But there, with that 3.5% increase sort of built in, even if you get your 7% each year, we do expect that the contribution will go up by about $40,000 per year, just based on the current funding, funding model that's, that the city has been using. In terms of some of the other metrics, the funded ratio... In terms of some of the other metrics, the funded ratio, it went down this year from 76.7% down to 72.7. That's driven primarily by the, 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 uh, poor experience. Not only the assets, but the liabilities that I mentioned, the 13, over 13% increase in, in salaries. We were expecting, you know, far less than that, only about, about 4%. So the, there were liability losses as well as the asset losses that contributed to the decrease in the funded ratio for, for the year. On, on page 10, just looking at the development of the contribution requirement, you know, the $100,000 increase, about $104,000 actually was, you know, the, the higher pay, the, the more people that are, are in the, are in the funds. So it went out by about 104,000. But as a percentage of payroll, you know, similar to what Francois said, you know, it's pretty consistent. You just have higher payroll, so you have more benefits that are being earned this year. Then the amortization payment is the other main piece of it, and that increased by about $300,000. You know, those losses that we experienced, we're, we're paying it off over an 18-year period right now. I, I know the, the police and fire is at, at 14, so we do have a little bit longer of a period. But the additional, those losses amortized over the 18-year period led to an increase in the contribution requirement of about $300,000. Then I'm going to flip ahead several pages, you know, in the interest of time and keep, you know, trying to limit the amount of boredom that you experience here tonight. On, on page 27, you know, this is that, that, the, that smooth value of asset calculation, that five-year smooth. And we use that same five-year smooth value of assets in, in all of our calculations. You'll see that the table in the middle of the, the middle of the page shows you sort of year by year, the experience that the fund has had. So in 2000, the year that ended in 2020, you know, there was a $2.8 million loss, meaning that we, the, the, the investment income fell $2.8 million short of our expectation at, at 7%. Then in 2021, we had an outstanding year, it was 8.8 more.
Frank, I'm so sorry, you said this is on page 27?
Yes, yes.
How come I'm not seeing that? I'm looking at the. I, I have a 2023, 2024, 2025, 2026, 2027.
Is it, the, the page numbers are in the bottom right-hand corner of the, of the page?
Okay, I'm just looking here on mine. The most not yet recognized, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm only seeing 23, 24, 25 and 26 and 27.
Yeah, yeah, so if you, okay, I see what you're looking at. Now look to the left. You have the plan year ending.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And then the gain or loss in each of those years. So you're looking at the rows, not the columns.
Correct, I'm sorry.
Okay, and, and so the, the rows, the, you know, the gain-loss row or, uh, column shows you what the, you know, the loss is in each, gain or loss is in each of the individual years. And, and so in 2022, you know, that's when we had our negative 15% return. You know, we were $9.7 million less than our expectation. So we recognized 20, we recognized 20% of that immediately. We recognized 20% this year. And we still, but we still have $5.8 million of investment loss from that one year left to recognize in our future valuations. This year, we, we got 10% versus our 7. So exceeded by 3%. That, that equates to a $870,000 gain. We still have $695,000 of that left to recognize, which is 80% of the total gain for the year. But at the end of the day, you look at the 2023 column, that shows you how much unrecognized loss there's, there's still, that still exists. It's about $2.2 million. You know, based on the pools that are there right now, you know, next year, we will still have $1.6 million of, of the loss, of losses left to recognize. Of course, we will add another layer to that, depending on what happens in, you know, in this fiscal year. And, and so the 1.6 hopefully is, you know, hopefully have, we have at least $1.6 million of excess gains this year, which, which could offset that and, and help, uh, help eliminate some of the headwinds that we have right now with these unrecognized losses.
So the question to you is that we're still expected at a 7%?
Yep, that's our, that's our current expectation, yes. And so the, the 7%. Sorry.
That's going on to next year also?
Yep, it, until, you know, we, we, we take a look at this. We do an experience study every five years. We did one a couple of years ago, I, I believe was the last time. You know, we, we do also look at it, you know, each year to make sure it's, it's reasonable. And over the last 22 or 23 years, the investment return assumptions have been trending down. If you look back in 2000, the average investment return assumption for a public pension plan was 8%. You know, and, and, you know, now it's 7% or actually even a little bit below 7%.
And inflation doesn't affect that over?
Well, that's where I was going to say. And, and, you know, that, that decrease from 8 to 7%, if you look at the last 20 years, the expected real rate of return, so the return in excess of inflation, has remained pretty constant. You know, people, you know, around the, the, the 4 and 1/2%, you know, 4 to 4 and 1/2% range. What, the reason why we saw the decrease from 8 down to 7 has been driven primarily by inflation. The inflation assumption was, you know, in 2000 was 3 and 1/2, 4%. You know, today, it's, you know, closer to 2 or 2 and 1/2%. And, and, and so the, the decrease that public pension plans have experienced in their investment return assumption has been driven primarily by the, the inflation going down over, over time. Now that we're seeing an upswing in inflation, it, it, it remains to be seen what, what that's going to do to the long-term inflation assumptions. But to the extent that inflation does increase, you know, we could get to a point at some, you know, at, you know, somewhere down the road, that we might be able to support increasing that rate from 7% to something, you know, maybe 7 and 1/4. I, I don't think we're there yet because the, you know, the inflation assumptions, the long-term inflation assumptions are, are still in that 2 and 1/2% range, based on what we see from, you know, most of the, uh, investment consultants across the country. But it is something we are monitoring and could potentially, you know, and, and it's something that could potentially impact your, your valuations down, down the road.
So my other question is, are we basing the inflation at 1% or 2.5%?
Our, let me see, we have, I think we have, uh, our, our current inflation assumption is 2 and 1/2%. So with a 2 and 1/2% inflation assumption, that means our real rate of return is 4 and 1/2%. The difference between the 7 that we're assuming and, and the 2 and 1/2% of inflation.
So technically, we're dropping 3 and 1/2%.
I didn't. What, sorry?
So it's not a 1% from 7 to 8? If we're dropping the 2 and 1/2 plus the 1 is 3 now?
So the 1% difference, that, that's really just a historical number. That's really not a number that pertains to your, your specific plan. So the, the 1% decrease, that, that's the average of the, the public pension plans across the country. They went from 8% in 2000 to 7% today. So that's, you know, that, that's the 1% that I was talking about. But for your specific plan, our current assumption for inflation is 2 and 1/2%. We have a, a real rate of return expectation of about 4 and 1/2%, which has been consistent. So that's really how we're getting to the 7%. The 2 and 1/2 plus the 4 and 1/2% is, is getting to our, our current assumption of, of 7%.
So, so I, I get what you're saying. But my question is that you guys say in the long run that it's, it's an assumption number, but we're seeing change right now with inflation, everything we've never seen before. And you're still basing it on historic numbers?
Well, the, the, our, our 2 and 1/2% inflation assumption is, is based on, you know, the, this is as a, the, the measurement date is June 30th of, of 2023. All of the data at that point suggests that 2 and 1/2% is, is a reasonable inflation assumption. It had been, it had been, you know, closer to 2%. But by, by 2023, it had started creeping up a little bit, but it's still at 2 and 1/2%. So, you know, it, it, it's not based on historical, you know, trend, you know, it's not based on historical information. It, it's really more looking at the forward-looking expectation of what inflation is going to be. And that, that changes from year to year. So to the extent that, you know, inflate, if inflation assumptions are, are, you know, getting closer to 3%, we could potentially justify increasing that assumption and, which would have an impact not only on your, um, uh, investment return assumption, but potentially other assumptions like your salary increase assumption and, and other things. You know, because the inflation is the underlying assumption, you know, is part, is the under, is the underlying part of a few different assumptions that we use. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yep, Councilman Constant.
Steve, they're predicting probably after the election, a big correction in the market. Drop, I mean, all this COVID money and everything thrown into the economy. The general government plan is funded, what, close to that 82% for police and fire?
It, it's, it's actually at, uh, just a little under 73% funded.
So if there's a big bad year, the plan will be able to absorb that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, every year we do evaluation. And every year, there's either, there's new gain, you know, there could be potentially be new unfunded accrued liability that's created each year based on the experience. And whatever, if there was a bad year, you know, we would have an investment loss. That investment loss, first of all, it would be smoothed over a five-year period. So you would, you wouldn't take a big hit immediately. It would be spread out over a, a five-year period. And as we recognize the losses, those losses are then amortized over, it'll be 17 years and then 16 years. So to the extent that there is some sort of correction, it's going to definitely put upward pressure on your contribution requirement. But as I mentioned, you have $40 million in, in market value of assets and $4 million of annual benefit payments. So there's no, there, there's, you know, you're, you're not going to miss payroll, if you will, because you don't have enough assets. But your contribution requirements will go up to, to make, to, you know, to, to fix or to replace the investment income that, that didn't arise. You know, all the money in the funds are in the, in the pension fund comes from either contributions or investment income. And when your investment income is less than our, your 7% assumption, you have to make that up with additional contributions. If you get 10 or 12%, you get more, then your contributions go down. So that's just part of the math. You know, we have a, a long-term model in, in place that is going to, you know, replace any losses that we have over, over a, a, a period of time. And, and so if you have a really bad year, you know, it's, it's not going to be good from a budget perspective, but it's not going to be catastrophic either.
You know, I, I think, thank you, Councilman. I think, you know what, we're surrounded with great individuals. I know our pension board does a great job here in their city. I'm sure, you know, we're working with some of the best of the best. Excuse me, uh, so we do put our trust in you. Obviously, you know, here we all have a fiduciary duty. We just want to ensure that, you know, the residents and the city is protected because, um, you know, that falls back on us.
Oh, yep.
We ask you that, you know, keep Dearborn Heights very close and dear to you. And we thank you for the auxiliary report. Does anyone else have any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to end the study session. I'm going to take a three-minute recess. And then we're going to start our regular city council meeting. Thank you, sir.
Chairman, can the public ask questions? Can the public ask?
Start with Zoom first. Just to get this one out of the way, does anyone on Zoom have any questions? Okay, we'll take it over to in-person. You got three minutes, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the streets you live on. Mr. Abdul Haq, thank you for correcting me there.
That's okay.
I'm just excited to start our regular meeting.
I know. Good evening, Zuhair Abdul Haq, Dearborn Heights. I have several questions, but I'm going just to ask a couple. We voted as city council a long time ago to put 1 and 1/2 million dollars every year to close the OPEB obligations for the healthcare, for the retiree. And our obligation, I think, liability was at 1.177 million dollars. Uh, 1 million goes approximately to the police and fire and 500,000 goes to the general government. Now, when they raised those salaries by the numbers, I missed, what was the number?
100,000.
800,000? Okay, are we going to increase the, because that will increase the obligations in the long run to base on the liabilities? Are we going to increase the 1.5 million dollars to any other number? Or we're just going to keep it at that? I hope you discuss it and you ask the consultants.
I will get with Steve, and it's Frank? Jason, Jason. Jason Frank is your name? Franken, I'm sorry. I, I will get with him and I will ask him those questions. Or if you guys can send me an email on, on that, please.
And the second.
Madam Clerk, I'm so sorry. I'm going to pause you real quick, Mr. Abdul Haq. Can you send me that resolution? I don't know if I was a part of that.
No, you weren't on the council.
I was not.
No, you were not.
So please send me that resolution because I'm unaware of that resolution. You, you want to come up to the mic, please?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
John. My dear friend.
The valuation that is prepared by these gentlemen doesn't have anything to do with the OPEB liability, okay? Your human resource department does a valuation. It doesn't get done annually, I think it's a certain period. And that's something that you'll want to check out with your HR department. But it's not part of these valuations of the pension systems. Okay? Okay. Yes. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. They do manage that account, don't they?
We do manage the money.
Thank you. The second thing, I would recommend very, very highly that the city council look on quarterly basis at the investments which are done by both the general government and by the police and fire. I would really like to see that more conservative approach because looking back at so many years, probably 10 years back, many years we lost money. And we know that the public have to provide 5% interest to the police and fire funds if they do not make the 5% or better. So to protect our residents, I hope you always keep your eyes on this. And I, I know they are separate entity. We cannot even make recommendation to them. But it's good to know always what, what's going on in our city through our treasurer because she is by law a part of that, of both boards, actually. And I hope that they will follow more conservative approach so we do not obligate the residents for that 5%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abdul Haq. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we will take a three-minute recess.